Good morning, everyone. Welcome on this bright and beautiful Tuesday, July the first, 2025. And we are going to have a county commissioners' meeting. And the first thing we have to do is give the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, I knew they wouldn't forsake us. Good morning, gentlemen. Nice you'd be here. My name is Candace Payne. I am the Chair of the Lewis and Clark County Commission. To my immediate left is Commissioner Tom Roff.
Good morning, Chair Payne.
Good morning, Tom. And to his left is Nadine McCarty and Greg McNally. So it's a meeting of the Irishmen over here. Good morning, Greg. To my right is Andy Hunt-Housen, Commissioner Extraordinaire, and our representatives from the County Attorney's Office, Nico Hesch and Keegan Shea, and the CAO. Well, anyway, the chief executive, Roger Balls, who keeps us in line. Thank you, Roger.
Good morning.
Okay. Having gotten through that, reminder of the sign-up sheet. Remember to sign in right there on the little table. You can pick up an agenda so you are right on schedule with everyone. All right. We start off with, there are, appears there are no consent action items this morning. The action item starts off with Resolution 2025-56 relating to a $214,726.42 bond for the Lewis and Clark County Juniper Stable Road Rural Improvement District as presented to us by Jessica Makis. Good morning, Jessica. I haven't seen you in a while.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Makis, Special District's Program Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. You have before you today for your consideration Resolution 2025-56, authorizing participation in the Board of Investments of the State of Montana Intercap Loan Program and the related closing documents. On December 5th, 2023, the Commission authorized financing of improvements for the Juniper Stable Rural Improvement District Number 2023-3. And you can see this on your map. It's outlined in blue. It doesn't have a color on it yet, but it is outlined there just off the frontage road. Improvements included installation of a three-inch asphalt mat, chip seals surfacing, and fog seal surfacing on Stable Road and Juniper Drive. The final project cost, including the required 5% for the RID revolving fund, came to $214,726.42. Resolution 2023-103 to levy and assess the district was passed on December 5th, 2023, and established the assessment of $1,005 per property per year for a period of 15 years based on the initial loan amount of $321,957 using estimated construction costs. Construction came in under budget due to lower-than-expected asphalt numbers, and we will lower that assessment to around $670 per property per year later this summer. This assessment will be used to repay this loan and will be assessed until it's paid off. Again, with the Montana Board of Investments, this is a fairly low-interest-rate loan. It is variable, and it's set on February 16th of each year. Currently, that rate is 5%, down from 5.75% last year. The 10-year average on the loan is 3.27%, and the overall average since its inception in the late '80s is 3.9%. So pretty good loan program for the residents there. Staff recommend approval of Resolution 2025-56, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Chair Payne, if I might?
Mr. Roff?
You know, we don't, we try not to borrow money here at the county. But if I understand it right, we've got some, sometimes when a big project comes in, a special district does not have its, have money set aside to do the project, then we'll go out like this and borrow money to pay for it. And down the road, is there a way that we can help these folks to put enough money aside so that when it comes time again, they, they, they don't wind up having to borrow money again?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Roff, that's a great question. The Rural Improvement District process is guided by state statute. And the way rural improvement districts work is that there's generally an initial improvement, which often requires financing, and then there's maintenance on that improvement. And so we can only account for annually what it costs to maintain that initial improvement. When the life of that improvement has, has met its natural function, for asphalt, that's 25 to 30 years, thereabouts, and then you would need to maybe repave that road, that would be considered a new improvement. So we cannot, you know, save money, so to speak, for that, that repaving or rebuilding in 25 to 30 years. At that point, it would be up to citizens to decide how they wanted to proceed, and they would have to go through this, this transparent RID creation process again and have their, their say on how they would like to do that. That makes sense?
And if I might follow up?
Yes, Tom?
And so in other words, it wouldn't be fair to put interest on the backs of the rest of the people around the county for a project like this. It only applies to the people involved in this particular special improvement district. Is that right?
Chair Payne, Commissioner Roff, that's correct. So there are 33 properties in this specific district, and those 33 properties who benefit from this improvement and the maintenance on this improvement will be assessed for this improvement.
All right. And maybe, and maybe the, you know, the state's been bragging about paying off all their debt. Maybe they should allow special improvement districts to set money aside so that they can take care of things like this and wouldn't have to go in debt. And that's just my thought process. Maybe, maybe so. Maybe or maybe not.
Were you planning to run for legislature anytime?
Chair Payne, no. But it would take a change at the legislative level to change these laws. So, and until that time, we will continue to follow them. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Andy, do you have any questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we need to have a motion on this, gentlemen.
Chair Payne, I would, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-56 relating to a $214,726.42 bond for the Lewis and Clark County Juniper Stable Road Rural Improvement District Number 2023-03, fixing the form and details and providing for the execution and delivery thereof and surety therefore, as explained by Jessica Makis. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this resolution. Does the Commission have any other comments?
Chair Payne.
Andy?
I just wanted to say thanks to Jessica. Another good news story. It's great to have an estimate and be way under. And that, that helps these folks go from a $1,000-a-year assessment to a 670. I mean, it's a big, big saving, so that's great. And good explanation about how, how it works, and appreciate that. I think people watching probably appreciate that as well. Thanks, Chair Payne.
And Tom?
I just, I agree with Commissioner Hunt-Housen. Well done. Staff is watching out for the people and trying to keep the cost down.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the Action Item 3A Resolution 2025-56 relating to a $214,726.42 bond for the Lewis and Clark County Juniper Stable Road Rural Improvement District Number 2023-03, fixing the form and details and providing for the execution and delivery thereof and surety therefore, as presented by Jessica Makis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Pass unanimously. Thank you, Jessica. Next on our agenda, Action Item 3B, Agreement Between Lewis and Clark County and the U.S. Forest Service. And this is presented by our friend Brian Robinson. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. I'm Captain Brian Robinson with the Sheriff's Office. For your consideration today, I have the Cooperative Law Enforcement Agreement between the United States Forest Service and Lewis and Clark County. This is a longstanding agreement that we have with the Forest Service to provide concentrated patrols at Forest Service campgrounds and other Forest Service recreation sites. The majority of this contract is fulfilled by our reserve deputy sheriffs. The Forest Service pays them $25 per hour along with 67 cents per mile for the use of the vehicles. Total amount of the contract is $13,500. At the end of the fiscal year, if all of that money is not spent, they have allowed the reserves to use the remaining funds to buy much-needed equipment to supplement what the reserves use to keep up to date with full-time officers. In addition to paying for the campground checks, I just want to point out that this contract also provides us the opportunity to be reimbursed by the Forest Service in the event of a wildland fire that we experienced this last couple of weeks. In the event that they would have asked the Sheriff's Office for assistance in security with the evacuations or anything else, this would allow our fabulous finance officer to request reimbursement for wages that the Sheriff's Office incurred and the expenses that we incurred. So this is a great contract. It's a great partnership between the Forest Service and us. Lewis and Clark County is vast. It's beautiful, and we have a lot of recreation sites on federal lands that the Forest Service cannot cover. So they ask us to help them out with the two dozen or so campgrounds that we have, both on the east, west, and north sides of our counties. So it's a great opportunity to keep the partnership going with them. And with the great partnership that we have, we work very well hand-in-hand with Forest Service folks here.
Thank you. I think this nasty incident they had over in Idaho reminds us how important our law enforcement is, even in the great outdoors that we just assume is always safe and out there and where we can recreate. It's not always the truth. So, okay. Is there any comments from the Commission? Questions? Tom?
No.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, could we have a motion, please?
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the U.S. Forest Service as presented by Captain Robinson.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the U.S. Forest Service as presented by Captain Robinson. And is there any further comment from the Commission? I'm not sure hand signals qualify, but...
Got the thumbs up, so.
Thumbs up, then.
It was an approval. Okay. All those in favor of approving this agreement indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Chair Payne.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Oh, I remember you.
How are you doing today?
I'm, I'm good. Item, Action Item Number 3C is On-Site Detention Center Healthcare Services Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Helena Direct Primary Care, PLLC. And this is presented by our friend Commander Troy Christensen.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Hunt-Housen, and Roff. This is something that we've been needing for a long time. This is, consider this, this health service treatment from the Helena Direct Primary Care is something that's really needed. The amount of transports that we do weekly is just astronomical. And with him there to be able to cover that as part of this, the amount is 115,200 per year, and that'd be 9,600 per month. So this is something that's truly going to be beneficial to the whole county, the amount of transports we do, the time it takes for that. And he'll be able to, biggest thing he'll be working on is the Montana opioid abatement trust. And that's for all the people coming on opiates. That helps screen them and go through what they need to, to recover. And we would ask for this to be approved, 115,200 for the $9,600 per month.
Thank you. Thank you, Commander Christensen. I have a question. You mentioned the cost of transport. Where are you transporting these people from and to?
To like peer view, just any of the doctor appointments close so they can see a doctor. We have four nurses that can do their scope of services. But anytime they need a doctor, we have to transport them somewhere. Most of it's here in Helena, but sometimes we have to go elsewhere for different types of doctor appointments. And so that will cut that way back to only specialty transports instead of every single person.
Okay. Sounds like a good plan. Tom, you got a question?
And if I, if I understand it right, it takes at least two people from your staff plus a car to, to transport a prisoner to, to the doctor.
Yeah.
And you have to arrange the schedules for all of these people.
Yeah.
Where if you have a doctor coming in and visiting them in the, in the, in the detention center, you're saving a lot of hassle and, and taking care of them and, and meeting their, their medical needs a lot faster.
Yes, plus the security for the whole community, not having the people outside of the facility for that length of time. That's a big consideration also.
You bet. Makes good sense.
Yes. Andy, do you have anything?
Chair Payne? Thanks, yes, Commander. Thanks. I think it's been overall well-explained. I just want to reiterate that it's kind of been part of the plan for a while. And with the opportunity of this opioid funding, opioid abatement trust funding gave us another chance to get a provider in the facility. We used to have a provider in the facility, and that worked for a while. And it's been a lot more challenging, I believe, from my observation, to see us try and transport and all the things that you just described and try and have medical, medical services outside, from outside of the facility through telehealth and those kinds of things. Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. But this, I think, will be a better solution. I hope we can sustain a consistent provider. I know that was our challenge in the past. So I'm looking forward to see how this works, and I'm looking forward to the focus on the opioid abatement kinds of activities. And we have the foundation of a lot of those in our, in our facility already.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Is there a question there?
You're welcome to comment on that.
But you made a lot of very good points, yes. This is going to be tremendous for us. Get everybody processed through the system in a lot more timely manner because sometimes it's three or four weeks before we can get them where they need to be. This will be the week they come in. They'll be evaluated and taken care of, so it'll be a lot better all the way around.
Thank you, Commander. Any further questions, comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, could we have a motion, please?
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the On-Site Detention Center Healthcare Services Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Helena Direct Primary Care, PLLC, as explained by Commander Troy Christensen. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the On-Site Detention Center Healthcare Services Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Helena Direct Primary Care, PLLC. Are there any further comments from the Commission?
Chair Payne, I, I just, I think that one of the real great advantages here, we may, sometimes people come into the, into the detention center, they have mental illness, and they are on, on drugs to, to help them get through things. And without having someone who can prescribe the, the drugs that they need to continue, it makes the whole process more difficult. And if those folks are off their meds for the three or four weeks, like you have mentioned about, before you could get them, get them in, over to get, over there, we can, we can help keep them on their meds and, and serve them better, help them get, get more, be more stable while they're, while they're in the facility and, and just all around a much better deal for, for us and for, and for the people who are in, visitors in your motel.
Agreed, very much so.
Yeah. I really support this a lot. I think it's a great idea.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we approve this agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is the contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Trinity School District Number Four as presented by our friend Sarah Sandow.
Good morning, Chair Payne and members of the Commission. I'm Sarah Sandow, the grant specialist at Lewis and Clark Public Health. The Commissioners will consider the professional services contract with Trinity School District Number Four for Lewis and Clark Public Health to provide school nursing for the 2025-2026 school year. Trinity will pay Lewis and Clark $2,898 for the school year, split between two invoices. Trinity has contracted with Lewis and Clark Public Health for many years to provide school nursing for their students. Lewis and Clark Public Health Nursing Team provides vision and hearing screenings, immunization reviews, and helps with the control of communicable disease as outlined in the scope of services portion of the contract. Being a small rural school, it does not make sense for them to have their own school nurse on staff. This is a partnership that can provide the school with a resource that helps their students and budget while also fits in our scope of work at the Health Department. There are currently 41 students at Trinity. This is the school that's in Canyon Creek. I'm here for questions, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Commission? Andy? Tom?
No.
Oh, seeing no questions, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Trinity School District Number Four as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we should approve the contract as presented by Sarah Sandow. Is there any further discussion amongst the Commissioners? Questions, concerns? Nope, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Trinity School District Number Four indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sarah. Item 3E, Contract Between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Wolf Creek School District Number 13. And this again will be presented by Sarah Sandow.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Payne and members of the Commission. I'm Sarah Sandow, the grant specialist at Lewis and Clark Public Health. The Commissioners will consider the professional services contract with Wolf Creek School District Number 13 for Lewis and Clark Public Health to provide school nursing for the 2025-2026 school year. Wolf Creek School District will pay Lewis and Clark $1,200 for the school year, split between two invoices. Wolf Creek School District has contracted with Lewis and Clark Public Health for many years to provide school nursing for their students. As said in the previous contract, Lewis and Clark Public Health Nursing Team provides vision and hearing screenings, immunization reviews, and helps with the control of communicable diseases outlined in the scope of services in the contract. Being a small rural school, it does not make sense for them to hire their own school nurse. This is a partnership that can provide the school with a resource that helps their students and their budget while also fits in the scope of work of the Health Department. There are currently 11 students at Wolf Creek. Staff recommends approval, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there any questions from the Commission? Tom? Andy?
Yeah.
Must have done a pretty good job explaining this. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, could we have a motion, please?
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Wolf Creek School District Number 13. Is it 13? Yes, 13, as explained by Sarah Sandow. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Wolf Creek School District Number 13. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none? Let's have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item Number 3F, Grant Application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, presented by Sarah Sandow. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Payne and members of the Commission. I'm Sarah Sandow, the grant specialist at Lewis and Clark Public Health. The Commissioners will consider the grant application to amend the cooperative agreement from the United States Environmental Protection Agency to Lewis and Clark Public Health in the additional amount of $263,000 for the East Helena Led Education and Assistance Program Institutional Controls. This would increase the total amount from $1,372,860 to $1,635,860. The budget period remains January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2028. Implementation and enforcement of institutional controls in East Helena and the surrounding area are a component of the Comprehensive Environmental Response, Compensation, and Liability Act remedy. Institutional control programs prevent or reduce recontamination of previously cleaned areas through certain restrictions, ensure oversight of additional cleanup activities, and provide the mechanism for monitoring conditions and implementing activities to address potential problems that may arise due contaminated soils that are left in place. Administration and enforcement of the East Helena Superfund site, administrative boundary are conducted by the Led Education and Assistance Program, which is housed within our environmental services team at Lewis and Clark Public Health and operating under the authority of the Lewis and Clark County Board of Health. Lewis and Clark County has received a spending since 2010 in five-year increments. During our current five-year increment, the work for this funding falls into four main components. Component one is health risks, prevention, and education. Component two is soil regulation, administration, and enforcement. Component three is environmental sampling. Component four is administration and reporting. Staff recommends approval.
I have a question.
Yes.
This is a contract that we entered into in 2023. And do we know why it is going to cost us an additional $263,000 from what our initial projection was?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Payne. Great question. So it was kind of a twofold. There was extra money at the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency. What's going to cost us more money is they are lowering the limits of how much lead could be in the soil, which means there will be more cleanup and regulation that we're able to offer. able to offer to East Helena. So that will take more administration and time from our Lewis and Clark Public Health to be able to outreach the community and do that cleanup as well.
Thank you. That makes perfect sense. But, you know, if we're going to be spending more money, and whether it comes from the EPA or Lewis and Clark County funds, it's all taxpayer money, so we need to keep an eye on that. Commissioners, you have any questions, Andy? Tom?
Nope.
Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, is, let's have a motion, please.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve the grant application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency as explained by Sarah Sandow.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we should approve the grant application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency as presented by Sarah Sandow. Is there any further discussion? Andy?
Chair Payne, just wanted to thank you. I think that your memo and explanation was very good on this. Reason didn't have any questions I was going to ask, to explain it a little more, but didn't have to, so thank you so much.
Tom, anything?
Nothing more.
Okay, in that case, we need to have a vote on this motion. All in favor of approving the grant application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency as presented by Sarah Sandow indicate by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Sarah. Next up, Grant Award to Lewis and Clark County for Montana Fish, Wildlife, and Parks Trail Stewardship Grant Program. Is that A supposed to be in there? Angie Hubbard and Lindsay Morgan. Good morning Angie.
Good morning Chair Payne and Commissioners. Angie Hubbard with Community Development and Planning. Before you today is a grant award from Montana Fish, Wildlife, and Parks Trail Stewardship Grant Program to construct a natural surface trail around the perimeter of North Star Park. The Trail Stewardship Grant Program is a state program that provides funding for the development, renovation, and maintenance of motorized and non-motorized recreational trails and trailside facilities throughout Montana. North Star Park is an 18-acre county-owned parkland property located within North Star subdivision, north of Lincoln Road, west of North Montana, and adjacent to Quail Drive and south of Guthrie Road. In spring of 2023, Community Development and Planning Department received American Rescue Plan Act funding.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Angie, speak more slowly, please.
Okay, sorry. In spring of 2023, Community Development and Planning Department received American Rescue Plan Act funding to prepare a master plan for North Star Park. The master plan was approved by the Commission in December of 2024. The final master plan shown here included different phases of development. The first phase includes a half-mile trail around the perimeter of North Star Park. On January 23rd, 2025, the Commission approved the Trail Stewardship Grant Application. Lewis and Clark County has been awarded grant funding in the amount of $54,235, with $10,000 in matched funds from the North Hills Park Fee Area for the construction of the trail. The North Hills Park Fee Area contains cash and lieu funds dedicated at the time of subdivision review under the state statute MCA 763621. The $10,000 match amount was approved by the City County Consolidated Parks Board on February 5th, 2025. If approved by the Commission, this grant award will fund a half-mile-long, six-foot-wide natural surface trail, six park benches, and seven signs, one at each access point around the perimeter of North Star Park. Staff recommends approval of the grant agreement with Montana Fish, Wildlife, and Parks Trail Stewardship Program. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have. And I also have Lindsay Morgan from Planning, who has spearheaded the effort, with me and Ann McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing, who has been so helpful throughout this entire process. And she may be able to answer questions that I might not. Thank you.
Boy, you come loaded for bear, don't you? That's good, Angie. Is there any questions from Commissioners?
Chair Payne.
Andy?
Ms. Hubbard, I'll form this in shape of a question if I can. But essentially, we have undergone an effort over the last couple of years to develop a plan for this park. That plan has been confirmed and affirmed by the Commission. And a good part of that plan was that in order to successfully implement the strategies of the plan, we'd have to find a way to fund it. And so we said we were going to go after grant dollars. And so I guess what I'm asking is, are we and is this a representation of doing exactly what we said we were going to do and following through? So I wanted that to be on the record that that's what we're doing, right?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, that's correct. That is what we are here to do.
Thank you.
Tom, any further questions?
No.
Is there any public comment? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Well, let's have a, let's have a motion here, guys.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Montana Fish, Wildlife, and Parks Trail Stewardship Grant Program as presented by Angie Hubbard. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we should approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from Montana Fish, Wildlife, and Parks Trail Stewardship Grant Program. Is there any further comment from the Commission?
Chair Payne, I guess, you know, it's really important that we have good parks out in the far parts of the county. It appears this is a good start, and if we can get some help from Fish, Wildlife, and Parks to pay for a portion of this project, it'll be an ongoing project for some time if I understand it properly. And we can get part of it done by, in this grant, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Tom. It has been moved and seconded that we approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from Montana Fish, Wildlife, and Parks Trail Stewardship Grant Program as explained to us by Angie Hubbard. All those in favor of approving the grant award signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those not approving this grant award signify by same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Angie. The next item on our agenda today, 3H, Resolution 2025-57 to abandon an alley in Block 13 of Seamer Park, and this will be presented by our friend Crystal Ness.
Good morning Chair Payne, Commissioners. Crystal Ness here for the final portion of a road abandonment. So kind to explain how these road projects work. First of all, we're going to order an investigation to go out and look at the road, which we've already done. The next step is to pass a resolution to make the road a county road because the county can only abandon county roads. And then we have an action before the Commission to actually abandon that county road, which in this case, we did that back in May of '21. We passed a motion to abandon the county road. That resolution to actually abandon the county road is not perfected or signed until we actually have mylar's that show the resulting lots. We have deeds, we have RTCs and all of that to effectuate the actual closure of this road.
RTC, isn't that a three-letter acronym?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's do better.
Realty Transfer Certificate. Okay. And so today before you, we have the final action to actually abandon the alley in Block 13 of the Seamer Park addition. Up on your screen, I have the parcel overlay from our wonderful map system. This alley is actually west of Williams Street, east of Spring Street. You can see the little delineation of where this alley is located. This is the Seamer Park actual plat that shows, let me. There we go. So in Block 13 of Seamer Park is where the alley was platted between Spring Street and Williams Street. You can also see that down on the bottom, we have a delineation for what we call Front Street, which is this right here, which was abandoned by a previous resolution in action by the Commission. So we have this alley that comes down between all of these lots that we're going to finally abandon today. This is showing where that alley is located between blocks one, or lots one and 18 of Block 13. This is the aerial photograph that shows where that alley lies, south of Central Avenue, east of Spring Street, west of Williams. And this is a preliminary plat that we received with the actual application that would show those lots actually absorbing that alley, which was platted as a right-of-way. This is the actual new plat that's going to be recorded today as soon as we get done executing all of the documents that we have here to execute. It's because all of these lots were owned by the same person, it had taken him a while to figure out how he wanted to configure all of these lots to make them work into his development plan. At this particular point in time, utilities have actually been run down this alley. This surveyor's note right here, even though we're abandoning that 20-foot alley, it is now designated as a 20-foot utility easement because that's where they have installed utilities. These will all be single-family homes that he has and is in the process of building that will certainly provide more housing for the Helena market. And I'm here for any questions.
I have a question, Crystal. Why, I don't understand the need to get rid of this alley. There, I mean, he's not moving the fence, the line, or what's the benefit of having this alley abandoned?
Chair Payne, Commissioners, once that alley was platted, anyone can drive down that alley. It was never developed. It was never built. So because he owns all of this property, it actually allows his lots to grow in size so that he can then meet our environmental health requirements for septic systems and wells.
That's the key. Thank you, Crystal. I figured there was more to this than who's going to pay for the fence.
Chair Payne, Commissioners, usually, especially when we see these alley abandonments, generally that's the bonus for the property owner to actually create a bigger lot so that they can meet Environmental Health Department's requirements.
Makes sense, okay. Any further questions from the Commission? Andy? Tom? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-57 to abandon an alley in Block 13 of Seamer Park as explained by Crystal Ness.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-57. Is there any further comment from the Commission?
And just a comment, I remember four years ago going out there and looking it over with you. And sometimes these things take a little while, but you're finally getting it done.
Chair Payne, Commissioner Rolfe, that's exactly right. In this particular instance, it took him a while to decide how he wanted to develop these lots, where he wanted to actually situate the housing that's going to go on these lots, where the drain fields were actually going to be located, and where the wells were going to be located. I am actually thankful that he took the time that was necessary to make sure that this is a good development to provide additional housing.
Just, and this is outside of the city limit, so it does not have a city water and sewer?
Chair Payne, that's exactly right.
Okay, so, let's see. Further comments from the Commission? Did I already ask for the motion?
Yep.
Oh, okay. We got to hurry up during this here. She's waiting for us. Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-57 to abandon an alley in Block 13 of Seamer Park as explained by Crystal Ness indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item 3I, Resolution 2025-58 to declare Grand Avenue, Highland Street, and Park Street of the Rumping Addition to Marysville County Roads as explained by Crystal Ness.
Good morning Chair Payne, Crystal Ness, Development Services Supervisor again. So here we are on the second leg of our action up in the Rumping Addition of Marysville. Commissioner Hunthausen and myself and Jenny Chambers and Dan Carlin went up here on a little field trip to actually take a look at these lots that were actually going to declare county roads in the eventual abandonment and then aggregation of a bunch of these lots. And we're ultimately going to do, declare an easement for Trinity Road, which is the actual road that comes through this part of the country. Trinity Road provides access to all of these lots once you get north of Fourth Street and Tennis Place in the Rumping Addition, which is north of Marysville. So here I have the parcel overlay showing the lots and the streets in both the Marysville Townsite and then the Rumping Addition. So here's the Rumping Addition as it was platted back in 1887 that dedicated, delineated all of these rights of ways for roads. None of these roads were actually built except for this small portion of Tennis Place. As you will notice, there's actually a dedicated and delineated waterway that comes through here. I've actually been dealing with all of these lots up here and these property owners up in the Rumping Addition. We've actually come to an agreement and a quiet title action on that waterway, which we will talk about when we get ready to abandon these roads. So these are, this is the overlay for- So these are, this is the overlay for, once again, the right-of-ways and the lots. So this is one of the maps that I put into your packet. So we had previously abandoned by Resolution 2004 this small portion of Grand Avenue. We had also abandoned by Resolution 1984-11, Grand Street, which is running here. And by Resolution 1983-59, we had abandoned this part of Park Street. So the parts that we're dealing with today to make county roads are this portion of Highland and Grand Avenue and this small portion of Park Street that heads north from Grand Avenue. This is the parcel overlay of those portions that we're seeking to have made county roads and the location of Trinity Road that comes in and is the actual access road for all of these lots. So this is the map that will actually be attached to the resolution, creating county roads from the eastern or the western boundary of Lot 4 and Block 5 to the end of the road and Park Street headed north on paralleling Block 3 and this portion of Highland Street between Block 5 and 6 and 7 and 8. And I'm here for any questions.
Crystal, just so I can kind of get my bearings, the only place I have a certainty of locating is the Marysville House. Could you point where that lies on your map so that I sort of can get this in my head? I hate when that happens.
So the Marysville House is going to be this red dot just about right where my arrow is.
So another question, if you would go back up to the top of this map, the Trinity Road and Long Gulch Road, does that lead to another subdivision?
Chair Payne, no, it does not. But Long Gulch Road is a county road and we actually have an RID on it.
So there must be houses out there.
There are ranches out there, there are property owners out there. Trinity Gulch Road actually goes quite a ways. Well, it turns into Long Gulch Road, swings back around, and we eventually get to go somewhere with it.
Canyon Creek.
Right?
Yeah.
We do. We go to Canyon Creek. There's Deer Creek Road, Canyon Creek should be just ahead of us. It's a long road. Here's Canyon Creek, here's Marysville.
There is a back road I need to see. Okay, thank you, that was very helpful, Crystal. Tom, do you have anything?
No, I just caught a comment, I took a ride down that Long Gulch Road a couple of years ago, all the way from Canyon Creek all the way through to Marysville. There's a couple, there's an old dump up there and several things. Kind of an interesting ride.
Are there abandoned mines up there?
Well, I'm sure.
So Chair Payne, Commission, when I've been having conversations with the folks at Public Works, and of course Jenny Chambers is currently the new Director of Public Works, back in the day, we had roads for a few things, livestock, timber, and mining. It wasn't for houses. So livestock, timber, and mining basically dictated where the roads would be built. And of course, we have the, we have the mine down here, right outside of Marysville. So all of this property up here, we have four property owners that own all of this property. You can see that because we abandoned this end of Grand Avenue, they essentially have a driveway that accesses off of Trinity Road that goes to their dwelling here. This is the only other entity besides the common property owners up here that accesses onto Trinity Road. All of the lots, the new configuration of all of these lots will eventually provide for frontage onto Trinity Road, which we will dedicate as an easement on the final plat.
Fascinating. Thank you. Well, any further questions, comments? Did I already ask for public comment?
No, ma'am, you did not.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Let's have a motion, gentlemen.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we approve Resolution 2025-58 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2025-58. Is there any further discussion from the Commission? Seeing none, all in favor of this, of approving this resolution as presented by Crystal Ness signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those not approving, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Crystal. Next on our agenda is 3J, Board Appointments, and this will be presented by Roger Balls.
Thank you, Chair Payne and Commissioners. As you just said, this is item 3J on the agenda. Commissioners, you have the backup memo in your packet. I will read it into the record. Commissioner, these candidates for these different actions you're going to be asked to take all meet the qualifications for consideration of each board and committee that's before you this morning. Commissioners, there are eight distinct different appointments for you to consider this morning. Our process is usually to take them one at a time. I'll read them into the record and then we'll stop for whatever you think is the appropriate action. The first one is the Board of Adjustment. Eric Thomas and Timothy Shankland were serving terms that expired June 30, 2025. Both wish reappointment to second terms. There were no other applicants. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicants to terms that will expire June 30, 2027.
Thank you, Roger. Is there any questions from the Commission?
None.
Seeing none. Is there, is there any public comment? Seeing none. Let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to make the appointment of Eric Thomas and Timothy Shankland to terms serving, full, two full terms, both of them with full terms serving and expire in 2027.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we should approve the appointment of Eric Thomas and Timothy Shankland to the terms on the Board of Adjustment, which will expire on June 30, 2027. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none. All in favor of this appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item is City County Board of Health. Michael Beadle, Licensed MD Representative, termed out. Dr. Anastasia Nash applied. There were no other applicants for the Licensed MD position. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicant to a term that will expire June 30, 2028.
Does the Commission have any questions?
No.
Um, seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment. We should have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we appoint Dr. Anastasia Nash to a term that will expire June 30, 2028 in the City County Board of Health.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the appointment of Dr. Anastasia Nash to the City County Board of Health. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Move, motion passes unanimously. Mr. Balls?
Thank you. Next, you also have the City County Board of Health. Bree McLaren, Consumer of Health Services Representative, termed out. Michael McQuire, Carolyn Webster, Amy Klein, Jesse Howar, Paul Gottler, and Casey Blumenthal applied. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicants and select one to a term that will expire June 30, 2028.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions?
Just, just as thoughts as we're going forward, we've got six great applicants who foot their names in. I noticed this is a position for a consumer of health services rather than a medical expert. And so I would lean towards having someone on there, I think there were two of them that are professional, I believe nurses in this case. So I would lean towards one of the other, one of the other four. Not that they're not qualified, it's just that to be a true consumer, I think it's, they would represent, the consumers would be represented by someone who's not a health professional.
Andy, do you have any thoughts on this motion?
Chair Payne, not really. I think we do have multiple good candidates, and it is a little bit of a balancing act to determine, you know, who are folks that are more professional in terms of healthcare and/or public health versus consumers of healthcare. But I think there are several good candidates, so I'm happy to discuss at the time of a motion here, so.
My comment would be that as human beings, I think all of us are consumers of healthcare, whether we are a registered nurse or a medical doctor or a guy that drives the garbage truck. We all use these services and they're important to us, and it's important to have a well-balanced But I also recognize Tom's suggestion that sometimes you get all these professionals, they have one way of looking at it, and a consumer might not see it that way. Is there any public comment? Would I be out of line if I were to ask Drenda Neiman to come up and make a comment on the issue that we have, that we're talking about here, whether it's better to have more professionals or John Q. Public? She's our resident expert on this.
Chair Payne and Commissioners, I think you can. I don't know if Ms. Neiman was here just for the purposes of taking in the meeting as opposed to providing her own comment. Again, the Board of Health is the entity that oversees the Health Department. So I think if she has the ability to, and I'm saying that she might not, but if you're looking for input or if, you know, she has an awareness of some of these members, I think that's appropriate to ask that question of Ms. Neiman.
And the question that I would ask if she should decide to respond is the parts that members of the Board play in decision-making as to, and whether you're a doctor or a nurse or a manager of the hospital or a school bus driver, how, what impact is that going to have on our Board of Health?
Chair Payne and Commissioners, I think that's an appropriate question to ask. Certainly when you're looking at applicants, you know, experiences on boards is a big one. You know, I don't have any personal knowledge of anyone here, but you know, if that's included in any of their application, that's certainly something that the Board gets to consider and I think should be a valid component of your consideration.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Drenda Neiman, would you come forward and help us wade through this?
Good morning, Chair Payne and Commissioners. My name is Drenda Neiman. I'm the Health Officer with Lewis &amp; Clark Public Health. I'm happy to provide some information that might be helpful. The bylaws are set up to ensure that the Board of Health has representation that is broad and diverse. And so we do have members of the Board of Health that are essentially assigned rather than appointed by yourself. Those members include a County Commissioner, someone from the City Commission, an East Helena Council Representative, and the Superintendent of Schools. So those are our appointed members who come from elected positions. And then the other five are diverse members of the community. We have a member that represents the City of Helena. And at this point, the individual who represents the City of Helena has a legal background as an attorney by trade, works for the state of Montana. And the county, the resident who lives in the county, that individual has a small business background and has been a business owner in our community. And then we have a position that is specific to environmental health, and so that individual needs to have an environmental health background. We do have that position filled, and she works with Department of Environmental Quality. So we have that perspective that is there. And then the two positions that you have before you today, so the medical provider and then consumer of health. And I would agree with Commissioner Rolf that the intention is to have somebody that can represent those that receive services in this community. And so looking at the applications, keep in mind who we currently have on the Board and the intention of keeping the Board as diverse and representative of this community as possible.
Thank you, Drenda. I appreciate your viewpoint. Any questions? Okay, thank you, Drenda. Can I ask for public comment? Let's, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd like to just preface it by saying that anyone of the six appear to be fully qualified to be members, probably would all be good members. I lean towards someone who is not a health professional. And because we already have a doctor on there and staff is pretty well-staffed, loaded with health professionals, I'd like to broaden the perspective a little bit. And I, I would And I would like to move to approve Michael McGuire as the Consumer of Health Services Representative.
Second.
For the Board.
Sorry, second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appointment of Michael McGuire to the City County Board of Health to fill the position of consumer of public health. Is there any further discussion?
Chair Payne.
Andy?
Thanks, I appreciate the conversation because it does help clarify things a bit. And like Mr. Rolfe said, or Commissioner Rolfe said, you know, we have a whole bunch of qualified applicants here. I was leaning more toward people who had the experience in public health, those kinds of things, and that direction, but post this conversation, I think I can support the applicant that he has nominated here, I guess, or recommended. So I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, well, let's see, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Mr. Michael McGuire to the City County Board of Health. We've had the discussion, let's have a vote. All in favor of appointing Michael McGuire, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Unanimous appointment of Michael McGuire.
Chair Payne, if I might just comment.
Certainly.
Great people on that Board. I hope they will continue to be interested, put their name in. If not on this Board, again, when there's openings, there are, we've got about 30 other Boards. We need people that are as interested as these folks were on all of our Boards.
That's right, thank you, Tom. Mr. Balls, Compensation Board.
As you just stated, Chair Payne, next is the Compensation Board. Shawna Helfert's partial term expired June 30, 2025. She wishes reappointment to a full first term. There were no other applicants. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicant to a term that will expire June 30, 2028.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions from the Commission? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Let's see. We should have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we appoint Shawna Helfert to the Compensation Board to a term that will end June 30, 2028.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we appoint Shawna Helfert to a full first term on the Compensation Board. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Roger?
Next, we have the Human Services Task Force. Todd Will and Connie Gates were serving partial terms that expired June 30, 2025. Both wish reappointment to full first terms. There were no other applicants. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicants to terms that will expire June 30, 2028.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions from the Commission? Seeing none, we should have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to...
I forgot about the public comment.
Sorry about that.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Okay, we need a motion now.
Chair Payne, I move to approve Todd Will and Connie Gates to terms expiring on June 30 of 2028.
Second.
Yeah. And if I might just comment, it is a real pleasure to be able to recommend Connie Gates on the Board. We grew up together in Bozeman and she's...
I'm not sure that's a recommendation.
Yeah, I think it, this is, she's a fine individual. Her parents were friends of mine, her father was probably the finest auto mechanic in the state of Montana. And her dad ran the school lunch line at the high school.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Any other comment, Andy? Did I ask for public comment? Yes, I did that. Do we have a motion? We do, okay. We should vote on this, right? All right, all those in favor of appointing Todd Will and Connie Gates to appointment to their full first terms of the Human Services Task Force, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Roger?
This is for the Open Land Citizens Advisory Committee. Tony Corini, Jeremy Fadness, and Russell Fruits were serving terms that expired June 30, 2025. All wish reappointment. There were no other applicants. Under Action Staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicants to terms that will expire June 30, 2028.
Thank you, Roger. Any questions or comments from the Commission? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we appoint Mr. Corini, if that's how you say it, excuse me if I'm mispronouncing it, Mr. Fadness and Mr. Fruits to the Open Lands Citizens Advisory Committee to a term that will end June 30, 2028.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appointment of Tony Corini, Jeremy Fadness, and Russell Fruits to the Open Land Citizens Advisory Committee. Is there any further questions from the Commission? Seeing none. Let's vote on this, all in favor of the appointments as listed to the Open Lands Citizens Advisory Committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Roger?
This is also for the Open Lands Citizens Advisory Committee. We had two members term out June 30, 2024. Tyler Halligan applied. Staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicant to a term that will expire June 30, 2027.
Just to clarify this in mind, so we've got two vacancies and only one person applied?
That is correct.
Okay, well, we're very appreciative of those who step up. Is there any questions from the Commissioners? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I would move to appoint Tyler Halligan to a term on the Open Lands Citizen Advisory Committee that ends on June 30, 2027.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appointment of Tyler Halligan to the Open Lands Citizens Advisory Committee for a term that will expire June 30, 2027. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Roger?
This is the final item for you. Water Quality Protection District. Edward Kearns was serving a partial term that expired June 30, 2025. He wishes reappointment to a full first term. Patty Hamblock applied. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicants to a term that will expire June 30, 2028.
Okay, clarification again, Roger. Is, are there, is there one seat open or are there two?
One.
One, thank you. Does the Commission have any questions regarding any of this? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I'd move that we appoint Edward Kearns to the Water Quality Protection District. His full term that will expire June 30, 2028.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appointment of Edward Kearns.
Kearns, excuse me.
Kearns.
Kearns, sorry.
Why is it Karen?
That's how you pronounce it, Karen.
K.E.R.N.S., isn't it like Ed Kearns out of Townsend?
I think it's a...
Different one.
Like Ed Kearns out of Helena. Sorry, my apologies, I pronounced it wrong and I know him, so...
Okay, you do. Okay, I do not know this one. However, we need to carry on with this. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appointment of Edward Kearns to the Water Quality Protection District for a term that will expire June 30, 2028. All, oop, is there any further comment?
Just a comment, I think nothing negative about the other applicant. When someone has been appointed to a term and wishes to be reappointed up until the maximum length of time, we generally go along with that to take advantage of their experience on that Board and I think provides a little more stability on the Boards by doing that. But hopefully, the other applicant will apply here or in another Board in the future.
Nice comment, Tom, thank you, that's very helpful. Andy, do you have anything?
I would absolutely agree with that comment.
Yes, okay. All those in favor of appointing Ed Kearns to a full first term ending June 30, 2028 to the Water Quality Protection District, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We have come to the segment of our agenda where we ask that any public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission that is not on the agenda above, now is your chance. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.